Regular Board of Trustees. A meeting for the Napa Valley College is in session right now and it is 4:35 and 60 seconds.
4:36, I'm pretty sure.
Call to order, the Secretary, Dr. Kraft will do the roll call. Jennifer Baker.
Here.
Jeff Dodd.
Here.
Elizabeth Goff.
Here.
Kyle Iverson.
Her.
Michael Baldini.
Here.
Rosara Segura.
Here.
Rafael Rios.
Here.
Pablo Leon.
Here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Jeff Dodd, will you lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Should we adopt the agenda? Any changes that we would like to do?
Yes, I would like to move the President's Report 7.7 to the beginning of Reports in 7.0.
Oh, 7.0, okay. Okay, and we'll leave the rest as is. All in favor?
Any other changes, Catherine, on the agenda that you know about?
No.
Okay, thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
Who moved?
I think I did.
Jennifer, moved by Trustee Baker, second by Trustee Baldini, third, no, never mind.
Got it, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
And so, we are about to go into closed-session items. Closed-session public comment guidelines, is there anybody who wants to talk about items on the agenda or that doesn't pertain to the agenda? There are no public. We are, in closed session, we'll be discussing conference with labor negotiators. We will be discussing public employee evaluation. And 4.3, with respect to every item in business to be discussed in closed session pursuant to Section 54957, public employee discipline dismissal release.
You can just say two, two issues of that.
Two issues of that. And we will return approximately 5:30, and so off we go. So, we're back from closed session and we continue on with our regular meeting. In closed session, the Board of Trustees unanimously authorized the superintendent, president, or his designate to give notice to the manager of Healthcare Workforce Training Center as required by the employment agreement and the education code that the district would release her from her administrative position effective June 30, 2020. We also unanimously voted to release the senior manager, Title V Hispanic Servant Institutions Grant Project from his categorically funded administrative position effective June 2020. And so now, we go to public comment. It's an opportunity, it's an opportunity governed by the State of California under the Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to listen to concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The Board is not able, under the Brown Act, to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to listen to community input. At this time, the Board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes for comments to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting, but over which the Board has jurisdiction. The public may ask the Board to place an item related to the business of the district on a future Board agenda. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Individuals will be limited to a five-minute presentation. At this time, the Board Chair will poll those in attendance regarding their intent to speak on any item on the agenda. I do have a card. Mr. Alan Flores would like to speak.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Alan Flores and I am a music major here at Napa Valley College. I've had the wonderful privilege of working as a student worker in the President's Office these past 14 months and will be graduating with my transfers degree and IGESC certification this semester, which I will use to transfer to a CSU in Southern California. I am currently enrolled in a work experience class, which requires me to do a task I would not normally perform under this job, so I will be taking the minutes for today's Board meeting. I am truly grateful for the many resources this college offers to its students and appreciate all the hard work that goes into setting us up for success. I also just wanted to express my gratitude for the amount of effort NVC is putting into keeping its students, staff, and faculty safe from the ongoing pandemic, and that has affected us all. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we're on item number five. Never mind. Seventh, are we going to go to 7.0?
Yeah, actually, we reordered, so we are at the President's Report and then we're going to back into staff reports, because we wanted to address the kind of emergency operations issues and then you can, we can comment a little more on that. Thank you. A couple of things, I mean, the President's Report tonight is really in and around our infectious disease outbreak plan, the recent events on coronavirus, COVID-19, I think, is that right? Am I doing the right thing? Yes, thank you. So, there are a couple pieces. Originally, I had scheduled just to kind of bring us all up to speed with this one sheet, which is posted, and I'd like to work it through quickly. It shows some of the foundational work that's being done, and then introduce Amber and Nancy, who will talk about different aspects of the infectious disease plan. And then Fay and Oscar, to the extent that he would like to, in talking about the instructional and support activities and our general plan as we move forward. We're still under conversation for that, so we'll get as specific as we can tonight without really, you know, crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. So, Board, we're out ahead of the curve in terms of planning, and our infectious disease outbreak plan was part of our district emergency operations plan. We started looking at this as a piece naturally, a month or two, maybe it would go, maybe even longer, just to try to get a handle on it. It came along very nicely. It is, as you see here, dynamic, and it's a growing kind of document. It's supposed to prepare us for what we would ordinarily think about as an infectious outbreak. Not necessarily was it ever intended to address, in all of its aspects, a pandemic. So, we're trying to amend pieces as we go. However, the State of California has a primary responsibility for public health, and then the Napa County Health and Human Services has the local authority, and we'll talk more about that tonight in just a bit. You, as a Board, have established some Board policy for emergency operations. There's chances that we would come back to the Board for other kinds of Board policies in the future that might affect either the amount of workdays, it could affect hours, it could affect support services. I checked with some CEOs today, everybody's almost in the same bailiwick, trying to discuss with their leadership, academic senates, the classified senates, the labor groups, the administrative groups, just trying to figure out their best approaches to it. There is no single approach to what we're doing yet, but we'll fill you in the best we can. Our Director of Student Health and Chief of Police are the designated coordinators for the infectious disease. Makes great sense to me. We thought long and hard about, you know, the voices that would be the most important in back of that. The PIO's office, PIO with Holly is the kind of focal point for messages. We also recognize that having a lot of disparate kind of messages coming out of, from many vantage points, can be confusing for people. So, my goal really is to implement the plan to our best of our ability, make it flexible to the best of our ability, address the human need of faculty, staff, and students with occurring conditions, and from a leadership side and Board side, be very clear and direct. I think the worst thing we could be is what I'll call murky. Murky directives just leave people in limbo and they're not quite sure what to do, so we're going to try to get as specific as we can in the next day or two, at the most, on our plan. We are in close contact, there's last piece down there, Catherine, with the Health and Human Services, public health. There are, I don't know, Holly, maybe, you know, every two hours or even hourly updates that are kind of flowing in, so it's a rapidly evolving situation. Not talking about it doesn't make any sense to me at all, and addressing it in the abstract doesn't make any sense at all. So, we're trying to get the most we can done here and bring everybody up to speed as the Board. There's no action that you will be taking tonight, but I'm wanting you to be as informed as you can to address the community inquiries that you're going to get, and also to be good spokesman for our faculty, staff, and students once you get out there. So, with that, let me introduce Nancy and Amber, who kind of take us through the second piece. And then, questions are so appropriate from Board, and let me invite Cabinet during this, or the table, if it seems appropriate, either jot them down or save your comments for your reports, however it might work. We're flexible.
Good evening, Board. So, as Dr. Kraft said, this is a very dynamic situation. We started back towards the end of February sending out messages, letting people know that we were monitoring the situation. We implemented the Phase One of our plan, which is preparation, so I'll kind of go of an overview of what that all entails. Really, I think a lot of where we have improved upon this has been our communication, having that focal point with our PIO, sending out the messages, so it's one united message, and keeping everyone, students and staff, in the loop. One additional thing we have done, and you all can continue to check it out, is our website. So, it's www.nappavally.edu/emergency, and so anyone can go there, and that has all of updated information as to what we're doing and how we're moving through our plan. We have really started out with putting out extra hand sanitizers around campus, a lot of extra signage about washing your hands, how to keep yourself safe. We have provided training for any sort of, what would be the training?
For what?
For sanitizing, sorry.
You mean like facilities training? Yes. For your custodial stuff?
Sorry.
Yeah.
What is it that's considered a?
Antibacterial?
Yeah.
Antiviral?
Yeah. So, antibacterial and antivirals are actually considered hazardous materials, so in order for pesticides, so in order for staff to use those, they need to go through training. So, we got that training available to all of our staff on campus, so they can take that training and then the items will be delivered to them. And we've also provided all general cleaning purpose supplies for our faculty and staff here on campus. Along with that, we have been monitoring all of reported situations. Anything that has potential contact or possible direct contact involving COVID-19 has been monitored by either myself or Nancy Tamarisk. And really getting out there and talking to all of our staff and students, that's been a huge thing. We've talked to leadership on campus, faculty, staff, and to our students, ensuring they're getting the messaging and they're not worried or concerned about what's going on.
Nancy, you want to address all the medical aspects?
Excuse me. I did have a cold. I am getting better. I do not have COVID, I don't believe. I think perhaps Amber didn't want, I want to say something about our plan, and I can't help myself. This plan, I'm sure you all recall, Ken Arnold, Ken Arnold is the guru of disaster planning, and it's thanks to him that we have such a robust plan in place. It's thanks to him in a great deal. I mean, there's a whole committee working on that, you know, over the past few years, but certainly it was his leadership that guards here. And how do I know, how do I know how important it is? Because I'm in touch with my colleagues across the state, who are also Directors of Student Health, and I sent out our plan, and so many other colleges say, hey, we've got nothing, can we borrow this? And of course, of course, that's what we're doing. So, we're really, Napa Valley College in this aspect is really exercising statewide leadership as far as planning for infectious disease outbreaks. As everyone emphasizes, and this was another saying of Ken's, an emergency operations plan is really good until it meets the emergency, and then it starts changing. It has to change, it has to change. And so, that's what we're doing. I'm also impressed, I want to say I'm impressed with the response of Napa County Public Health Department, Dr. Karen Rilucio's, our Chief Medical Officer. Again, some of my colleagues can't get Zippo out of their county public health. She and their office have responded promptly to inquiries, have had webinars, meetings, and really, they're such a wonderful resource for us. As everybody's emphasized, it's been communication, 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 because, you know, there's not a lot we can actually do. I'm in the health center, no, I'm not going to be treating, bringing in the ventilators and treating people. The staying-home messaging has gone very well. We've encouraged students and staff to stay home if they are sick. People are calling in, people are self-quarantining. There's been such great cooperation on that, and including cooperation from the faculty, which is so important, that the students, as you know, you know, they're terrified, they're not there for their test day, and so we talk them through it, communicate with your professor, and the professors are saying, no problem, you can take that test another day, we will get you through this. So, that is just, I think, a wonderful example of the cooperation that we're seeing that's going to get us through this. As Amber said, either herself or myself has been in contact with everybody, that there's been a concern over possible exposure, and so far, as far as we know, there has been no exposures of any staff or students to coronavirus. That is going to change, I assure you, and so I don't want everybody to think I'm a Pollyanna. We will have cases in Napa County. As testing rolls out, there will be, you know, the screaming headlines are going to show up sooner or later, probably sooner rather than later, that now there's, you know, so many cases in Napa County. It will come, and we need to be prepared for that. I think that's about it. Yeah, I can't think, so, go ahead.
So, moving forward, last night, the California Department of Public Health sent out a statement about large events, mass gatherings, and so with that, and along with the recommendations from Napa County Department of Public Health as well, we did just send out an email about what we're going to do regarding large events here on campus. And then, our next step after that will be deciding on what we're going to do with travel and then also instruction. And Fay, would you like to address the instruction side of things?
Did anybody have any questions from our side? Thank you.
Great job.
Yes, I agree. Great job. I think the one thing that I want to address before I talk specifically about instruction is just the team effort that we really have had all the way through this, right from the beginning. We have worked together to get, as many people have said, the communication out to folks to make sure that everyone is informed. And I think, you know, going forward, that is still what we need to do and to make sure that everyone is on the same page. That being said, what am I doing with instruction? So, I have worked closely with my Academic Affairs Council, as well as with Academic Senate today and Faculty Association leadership, to have conversations about what our next steps are in terms of continuing instruction and how we might go about doing that. So, we are currently developing a plan to do so and figuring out all of the pieces and the drill down in terms of what that might look like. We are very close to putting out a communication regarding that, and we will do that within the next 24 hours, so that everybody knows what we are doing. I think the other thing I want to talk about in terms of this is that the faculty, as Nancy addressed, they're ready. They're ready to do whatever we need to do to support students. I mean, ultimately, that's what we're all here for, and we have to make sure that their needs are addressed. And so, our planning has included supports to our faculty, supports to our students, supports to everyone on our campus, so that we can make sure the students are getting what they need.
Oscar, would you mind talking about the kind of student affairs side and the specific student support?
Actually, we started about a week and a half ago, when this whole theme came out and we saw that things were going to get a bit more difficult, we started to ask, I asked our managers, student affairs, which and how would they be able to provide services online to our students in the event that down the line, we had to move to a modality that was online. And so, we've been working on exactly what it is that they're in place. I would say, I'm very confident to say that for the most part, all the services that we have currently for students in person, we have online. There's a couple of items that we're still waiting on that hopefully by Monday will be put in place, like all that advising, but beyond that, we're very confident that the services that students will be needing during this period of who knows, maybe two weeks or hopefully not more than that, students will avail themselves to services as they currently have. In addition to that, we will also be open during any period that we need to do things differently to students who may want to come in person. So, again, the idea is to provide the students the services they need, so that there's no disruption in their success at Napa College.
Thank you. Questions from the Board?
Questions? Thank you for all the information that you've had. It's wonderful we get the picture and keep up the good work, and let us know if we can, in any way, shape, or form, be of any assistance to you or support. Thanks again. And so, we continue with 7.1. Dr. Tejada? Tejada, I'm sorry, I keep saying.
So, I guess I'll start by some of the things that the Senate has passed. I am happy to report that the Senate in Business Session went ahead and approved, gave its final approval for AP 7120.1, which is the Faculty Hiring Administrative Procedure. So, that is en route to mutual agreement. The Academic Senate also approved the scale of adoption as recommended by the Guided Pathways Leadership, and Dr. Kraft and myself went ahead and signed off on that. The Senate also has approved emeritus status for Mary Shea, who served the college for 28 years, and for Ann Gross, who has served the college for 26 years. We approved the General Ed Learning Outcomes, affectionately called the Jell-Os, as recommended by the Faculty Business Committee. The Senate, the Academic Senate and the Office of the President collaborating and creating the IEPi grant in such a way that it is now inclusive and models equity while addressing the professional development needs of all three constituent groups. And then, this, no, a couple of meetings ago, the Senate approved the recommendation of the Faculty Evaluation Committee to grant tenure to Josh Hansen, Stan Hitchcock, Molly Hodgins, Kathleen Radcliffe, Andy Rubal, and Hope Scott. And so, the names have been forwarded to the VP, to the Vice President of Academic Affairs, and hopefully, they are en route to you. So, I would like to end with a request. There is an issue that I'd like to bring to your attention. It has to do with the arbitrary enforcement of the payment of a 2% bond mentioned in Section 11.14.3 of the contract, which deals with sabbatical leaves. This provision of the contract has never been enforced. When I took my sabbatical in 2015, I was not required to pay this upfront. I signed a contract with the district promising to return. In my 26 years of teaching full-time at this college, never has a faculty member been required to pay 2% of their salary in order to go on sabbatical. In my 26 years of teaching here, only one faculty member has left to take a job somewhere else, and that's after taking a sabbatical, and that faculty member did a buyout, so the district did not lose any money. I am respectfully requesting that this Board not require Dr. Dunkel and Dr. DeFranco to pay the 2% of their salary as a condition of their being granted their much-needed sabbatical for several reasons. One, Napa Valley College faculty are ranked below the 50 percentile in salary. Having to purchase a bond to go on sabbatical poses an undue financial burden on faculty. Indeed, it creates a tiered system to access sabbaticals. Those who are wealthy enough to afford to pay will be able to apply, and those who cannot afford it will not even apply. Sabbaticals are an important professional development activity that enhances the learning experience of our students. I was able to, as a result of being able to go on sabbatical, I was able to refresh my curricula and pedagogy, and as a result of what I learned on my sabbatical, my students have been the primary beneficiary. Secondly, to impose a pay-to-play practice to access sabbatical creates a climate of inequity and class division within the faculty and indeed within the Napa Valley College community. It also deprives students of well-rested and invigorated faculty who have refreshed their teaching, creating an equity gap in the quality of instruction for our students. Lastly, it violates past practice. Since this decision is being made arbitrarily with no data to support it, Dr. Dunkel and Dr. DeFranco are being arbitrarily singled out for no good reason, for indeed, no reason has been given for the all-of-a-sudden wanting to enforce this particular part of the contract. Neither of these professors have indicated that they would not be returning to Napa Valley College after their sabbatical. I urge this Board to not impose the 2% payment in order to go on sabbatical. Such unreasonable, excuse me, to impose this policy without warning and in such an arbitrary manner is unreasonable. Such unreasonable actions promote a climate of distrust, disrespect for the work of faculty, and most of all, a climate of inequity that encourages divisions and distrust. So, I urge you to continue your past practice in that all we had to do was to sign a contract and not pay 2% of our salary. Indeed, it poses a hardship to faculty, and given that, like I said, we are ranked 68 in terms of our salary in the state, this is really going to affect who has access to, who can access sabbaticals. I actually urge you to remove it from the contract. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and we'll definitely follow up with that and look into it.
Thank you.
And see what it is that we need to do. Thank you for your presentation. 7.2.
Mr. Harris?
Good evening, Board. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Administrative Senate, give the following report. In recent months, our exec group became aware of a discrepancy that was associated with the annual scholarship that our group gives at the scholarship ceremony in May. And... And spare the details, but I was very pleased with our exec board and the foundations personnel. We were able to work through the process, come to a solution and rectify the discrepancy with the staff quickly and we are now on board and on point to continue forward with our scholarship, annual scholarship giving. And the collateral component that happened is that it's going to give us an opportunity to really review the scholarships that we give out and provide specific details. It was very, very broad, the scholarship, so we can refine that. On a different and more impactful note, the Administrative Senate, which you all know includes all administrative staff and confidential staff, has been working, will continue to work with our students, our faculty colleagues and our other colleagues, as well as the board, to help navigate the challenges that we are all facing right now on a local, national, state and international levels. We look forward to the continued opportunity to serve our students, to serve the campus community and our community at large and look forward to doing so in any way we can. We've been in conversations, many of us in different levels, in our deans councils, academic affairs councils, et cetera. And we're here to help us get through this process as we, it seems like we're entering un-navigated and uncharted waters every year in some new process. But we're here, we're looking forward to working together and we'll get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. 7.3, Associated Students of Napa Valley College Report. I believe both Pablo and Christopher are on their way to the field trip, I believe.
So, no reporting?
So, no report on there. 7.4, Classified Association Report. Ms. Mall?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our classified membership met on Tuesday and a lot of interest, support and concern was expressed about the current pandemic. I want to let our board, our colleagues and our students as well know that classified staff is ready to step up. You can count on us, whatever you need from us, please don't hesitate to ask. We are here to serve our students in the best way possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. 7.5, Classified Senate Report. Mr. Shoemaker?
One thing I'm going to report, it's like due to the current crisis, I talked to Charo, we went ahead and decided to go ahead and postpone our spring break retreat and we'll address that once everything else is smoothed out. So, waters are choppy, we got your back.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you, yes. 7.6, Faculty Association Report. Ms. Iwamoto.
I was thinking our plates were full before. We were kind of in the middle of an open contract and salary negotiations and we had a lot of things that we needed to address as a union and a district to work out in contract. And now, with everything that's been going on with dealing with the pandemic, we've kind of opened up a whole other sort of set of MOUs and things that we'll have to go through fairly quickly while we make decisions. So, that's sort of taken precedent. Otherwise, statewide, I know that CTA, of which I'm a member of State Council, actually canceled their State Council. That was due to happen at the end of the month in Los Angeles. That means that a bunch of our policy and legislation will be put on hold. Tomorrow, I'll be driving to Sacramento to speak to our Higher Ed Board, the Community College Association Board, and we are actually looking at canceling our April conference as well. So, you know, it's, everyone is adjusting. We are, we're trying the best we can and just hoping that everybody stays safe and stays healthy.
Thank you. Yes, that seems to be the theme of the world. Number eight, the Concern Calendar is a board meeting practice that groups routine business and reports into one agenda item. The Concern Calendar can be approved in one action rather than filing motions on each of them separately.
Second?
Moved by Trustee Baldini, second by Trustee Dodd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, where are there?
Here.
Academic Affairs? So, academic affairs information. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Second?
Motioned by Trustee Baker, second.
I'm sorry, that was not clear. What was the motion for?
Curriculum changes.
For 9-1.
9-1.
So, to, just for the sake of it, can you please?
Sure. Yeah, I will move approval of 9.1.
A second?
Moved by Trustee Baker, second by Trustee Baldini. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 8.2, Career Access Pathways Agreement with St. Helena Unified School District. Can I please entertain a motion?
Move approval?
Moved by Trustee Rios, second by Trustee Baker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. 10, Administrative Services Information Discussion Action Items. Can I please have a motion for that?
Move approval?
We're on 10.1.
Yes.
Second?
Moved by Trustee Baldini, second Trustee Iverson. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have discussion?
Does anybody have any questions?
Just, I thought it's nice to have Cy on the board to go over really what we talked about in our preliminary approval with the unit makeup. I was just hoping to have a little bit of discussion when we're going to see them next and was looking at the timeline that Catherine so nicely circulated to the board that the Martin Group presented at January's meeting. I'm not sure if everyone had an opportunity to refresh their minds there, but just wanted to get a sense of timeline and I know it was outreach meetings and now we're dealing with a little something else that's a lot more important certainly, but just maybe in light of the circumstances now, what is the timeline immediately?
Sorry? If the chair allows, we can call on staff to unpack it a little bit.
Would you please? Yes.
Yes, I'd be happy to. So, we're very happy to have Cy on joining us again with your approval. We've actually already scheduled our first telephone call, kind of kickoff call with them tomorrow morning. And so, even though this contract indicates that it runs from April 1st through July 31st of 2021, which takes us through the pre-development agreement or the end of the pre-development agreement, if you look at the schedule that was circulated, July of 2021 is when we come out of DSA and we are ready to move into construction. And so, that would be just before groundbreaking. Now, this doesn't mean that we wouldn't look to come back to you to engage Cy on through the construction period, but we wanted the engagement with Cy on through the pre-development agreement. And so, Cy on will be working on us, as you see in the contract, Cy on will be working with us, I should say, on developing the agreements that will need to be in place with the 501(c)(3) that will own the project, with the management company that will manage the project. And there's something called a coordination agreement that spells out what the responsibilities of each individual party are in that process. So, they're going to work with us on that. But perhaps more importantly, they'll also be providing consulting services on a monthly basis. And so, we will be reaching out to them on a regular basis to help us navigate this process. And so, I don't have time for the next time Cy on will be here to present to you, but we'll certainly be giving you monthly updates as we move through the process and Cy on will be available, or representatives of Cy on will be available to provide updates to the board as well.
And then, do we anticipate that the Cy on group, they're going to have an opportunity? Let me just take a step back. We, the board, made a tentative, a proven, I call it tentative, in a sense of the unit makeup, number of apartments, number of units, bedrooms, so on and so forth. And the Martin Group said that, you know, this is not a, this is basically what we're looking at, but there is probably some opportunities for some fluctuations, the opportunity specifically for the Cy on group to come in and make sure that the original survey that they did among students and faculty and staff, you know, conclusions exactly what would be a good makeup. So, I just want to make sure that they're going to have an opportunity to review that and confirm that the unit makeup that's being developed is consistent with the findings of their survey.
Certainly. And so, one of the first questions that Anvols from Cy on asked me when we reached out to them to negotiate this contract is, when can we get a copy of the current plans? And so, we'll be providing that copy to them immediately upon execution of our contract. Now, I will say that Cy on, even though we haven't engaged them until this point beyond the initial feasibility study, they've been following our project and so, they're aware of what's been happening, haven't seen the plans as they are to date, but have been following along the information that's been presented to you by the Martin Group at the previous board meetings. Also, just the mix of units that appears in the current proposal is based on information that came from the Cy on report. And so, we're not anticipating that Cy on will be advising or proposing any significant changes, but that will be one of the first things that they'll look at under this contract.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I just want to thank Trustee Dodd for bringing that up and for Mr. Parker kind of clarifying that too, that Cy on has been working with us through this and it's not a new agreement per se.
Right.
I want to add, and Bob's worked very hard and made connection with him and really followed up, so it's been a, listening to the board's request. And thanks, Bob. It's really been a very, a good job. Well done.
Yes, thank you, definitely, in spite of all the excitement at your office and you were able to pull this off. Thank you. Thank you very much. So, it was moved by Trustee Baker.
You passed. That was, you allowed that conversation post.
Oh, okay. Public Hearing.
No. We're just, we're on 14.1. This one out. These are just blank. There's nothing in there.
So, number 14, 2018-2019 Progress Report.
Excuse me, I don't think we have a vote. I don't have a, the motion.
No, it was a first and second.
First and second?
Okay, let's do it again.
It was a first, there was a first and second, but, and then there was discussion and so...
I remember voting.
Let's retake it for the record then, that's fine.
I did not record it. Did you record it?
I had Baldini and Iverson.
The minutes taker has spoken.
Oh.
He's got it. And did you take a vote?
Alan calls it. No vote.
I was happy to vote again.
We didn't vote. We had the discussion, but there was no vote.
There, thank you. So, you have first and second.
We had discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Good thing we have a student worker taking minutes. Nice job, thank you. Thanks, Catherine, for catching that.
Okay, so, 14.1, Progress Report. Dr. Borno?
Good evening, Board. Each year, the Office of Research, Planning and Institutional Effectiveness, or RIPi, compiles an annual progress report tracking accomplishments associated with the institutional strategic plan. And I'm here tonight to present the 2018-2019 Progress Report. This slide outlines my presentation, which will cover the purpose of the report, the focus and structure of the report, and a summary of highlights from 2018-2019. The Annual Progress Report is part of a set of documents used to monitor our recent performance relative to established goals. At the October board meeting, I presented the Core Indicators Report and I indicated that accreditation requirements provided the external context for that report, tracking our performance relative to institutions at standards representing academic quality. The Annual Progress Report represents another way that the college monitors its performance relative to established goals. In this case, it's the goals identified in the institutional strategic plan. Documents such as these help address accreditation standards associated with institutional effectiveness and the role of the governing board. Within those standards pertaining to the governing board, accreditation standard 4C8 states, "To ensure the institution is accomplishing its goals for student success, the governing board regularly reviews key indicators of student learning and achievement and institutional plans for improving academic quality." The Board of Trustees approves our institutional planning goals and the progress report represents an effective institutional practice of reporting out accomplishments or closing the loop regarding those defined goals. The 2018-2019 Progress Report provides a sense of the substantive improvements that were made across the institution to promote the five broad institutional goals and promote student learning, success and achievement last year. The 2018-19 Progress Report is the first one under the current institutional strategic plan. The report is structured around the strategic initiatives, measurable objectives and deliverables associated with the five broad institutional goals established for 2018 to 2021. So, the five institutional goals are identified in this slide and they're associated with supporting the transition of students to MVC, engaging MVC students while they're here pursuing educational and job training goals, getting them to their defined goals and increasing student achievement and promoting the completion agenda as part of that process, ensuring the fiscal stability of the college and collaborating with partners in order to promote this work. Progress is reported in multiple formats for each goal. First, accomplishments associated with specific initiatives are described in summary form and the summaries focus on activities that were new and unique to 2018-2019. Performance measures associated with each goal are then presented in the form of a report card with the 2018-2019 performance reported alongside the 2017 to 2018 baseline measures. As has been our practice in recent years, the report card includes color coding and shading to convey the magnitude and direction of the change over the established baselines. And finally, any deliverables associated with the strategic initiatives are identified. So, some of the highlights from 2018-2019 include increasing opportunities for students at local high schools, including counseling and educational planning sessions and the introduction of the e-brochure. We also increased the number of high school partners and joint internal, external support services. So, those are all associated with Goal 1 of getting them in. We developed new processes and curriculum, particularly for AB 705 implementation, and we made improvements to some classrooms to incorporate new technology and support student learning. We also expanded academic and student support offerings as well as co-curricular events. So, that is associated with Goal 2 of engaging them while they are here and helping them get to their goals. We increased resources to support internship opportunities for students as well as employment opportunities among graduates and that was associated with Goal 3 of getting them to their defined educational goals. We communicated the fiscal implications of becoming a community-supported district and we are able to increase allocations to support funding priorities across the institution and some examples are provided in this slide, so that's associated with Goal 4. We increased partnerships with community organizations by 61%, particularly in the areas of mental health, community health and equity group advocacy. And we increased the number of cultural event offerings open to the local community by 33%. The Annual Progress Report is reviewed by the Planning and Budget Committee, shared with the governing board and distributed among the campus community each year. So, this report was presented to the Planning and Budget Committee at its meeting at the end of February and it will be distributed among the campus community and posted on the RIPi portion of the college website, associated with institutional planning, following this meeting, hopefully tomorrow. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Uh, so I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Do we have any questions for Dr. Warhol?
I have a, a question. In reading the report, I noticed that there was an increase in students from Calistoga that had enrolled in the college. Uh, and it's one thing that at least I've, you know, brought up the years I've been here about trying to increase the Valley, uh, you know, enrollment in the college. I'm just wondering, was, is there, do we know what happened, what caused that increase? Is it the outreach or what factors might have affected that?
Not, um, I, I don't, maybe Oscar could, um, provide some information about that. But one thing is that, um, there's a, the numbers that are in that part of the report, and there's a note, note to indicate this, it's a bit of a, um, proxy, uh, measurement in the sense that for the Unified, the Napa Valley Unified School District, we actually get, um, data files that contain the names and birth dates of recent graduates, and then we can use those, you know, first name, last name and birth date to match and be assured, okay, did Robin, who graduated from Napa High, show up here the next year? Uh, we haven't been able to get, um, similar data files from Calistoga and St. Helena. So what we did was we, um, we, we can get through Data Quest, another, an external, uh, data source, the number of graduates from each high school up Valley. And then we, we look at our local records and based on birth dates around, you know, if students are about seventeen or eighteen years old, and if they indicated that they, um, that their, um, high school of origin was one of those schools, then we say, okay, well, if there were a hundred and fifty graduates, then it looks like maybe thirty of them showed up here, but we, it's not as precise.
Yeah.
And, and as the other ones, so, but maybe Oscar can a, answer about the outreach.
Well, I think part of it as well is that, uh, we, we have dedicated staff members designed to work with Council High School and Palisades as well as St. Helena. So we have someone that's, that's in, in the Valley area, uh, arranging for the students to, to meet with, with, with our counselors, with our, with our special staff to ensure that the processes that they need to, to have in place in order to enroll here are done in a timely manner. So I think it's been the effort of having a dedicated person, uh, assist with coordination of, of the, of the activities related to, to enrolling at the college, as well as the outreach and, and the marketing and such, that's been part of that.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, that, I was also very excited and very happy to see Calistoga involved in that. Cause I keep hearing historically that, you know, for them, it's much easier to go over the mountain and, but no. Think, good, good, good work. Thank you. So we're on to fourteen point two, CCT board election. And Catherine, will you please open it up? And I would like to just say that, um, a lot of research and, and, uh, went into deciding as to who we would, um, vote, vote it for. There were fifty-five, fifty-five candidates and, and, um, is that right? No, but, but for the board, yeah. And so we, we decided that we were going to vote for, uh, Santa Barbara and both North and South Orange County. Because we, we use, you know, the CCT so much of, uh, um, some, um, some items and, um, both Orange and, uh, well, all three colleges, um, are, you know, community-based, districts, and so, um, they're good colleges. They have excellent records, and so this is what we decided on voting for. Are there any comments?
Hi, Trustee.
The attorneys are going through all this. Go ahead.
Did anyone talk to any of them?
We read their bios, um, and, um, it was the district record. Uh, a lot of the districts are going through many problems and, and, you know, their administration, their, and so these are very successful districts, so.
They are community-supported? I mean, that's interesting. Oh, they're not?
True. I, I don't believe North Orange is. I think South Orange is.
South Orange is. Uh, North Orange and Santa Monica are not.
Santa Monica is a great feeder of students into the U, the university systems, and so, uh, it's very commonly used for, um.
I would say, I could just add, Santa Monica has its own strengths, which is kind of opportunity entrepreneurially driven. They have a reputation for kind of DAS-type activity, um, branding. They've, uh, over the years, they've gone up and down and up and down, and they've, they've had their issues. But, um, I, I think, uh, any of these would be well-served, but I think these folks have some things in common with us. Um, I was not involved in this piece because this is a board piece, but that's just my comment on.
Excuse me, I, I did speak to Barry of the Santa Monica at, at the conference. And just as an aside, just, I agree with the recommended vote.
So you need a motion?
I'll move approval.
Do I, can I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved, unanimously approved. Board policy review and adoption fifteen point one.
Come up, or would we, could we do them as a whole?
This is a first read. They're not for action. I'm happy to open anything you'd like to have a look at.
It's like a smoking place would be my request.
I just had a que, so on our attendance policy, that's separate than our attendance policy and our infectious, infectious disease policy, right?
It is.
So they wouldn't, we would keep them separate, obviously.
This is, uh, um, this is a faculty purview item, really, and, and how it's done and, and, um, performed as part of their input. I think it's the best way to say that.
Anything else that we would like to?
Yeah, I'm not sure what we, I, there were some changes in there. You're welcome to look or comment, you know?
And again, it's first reading. Trustees?
Excuse me.
Yes.
This, this policy went through mutual agreement.
Yes.
Yes.
It did.
Uh-huh. And so what we're, I just, just, um, kind of, this is my, my, you know, so my first, uh, go around with this, so I just want clarification. I just want to ensure that the changes that are on this are the ones, that this is the version that we mutually agreed upon, and, um, that no changes have been made to this after mutual agreement.
No, this is, uh, the changes are in red that were approved by the Senate and went to mutual agreement.
What we. Yes, that, that's, that's what I'm asking. So that's what's in, that's what's in red.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
And what, we have a practice of showing the board what, what has gone through and what the changes are so that they understand.
I just wanted to be sure that that's what we were looking at. Thank you.
Okay, so.
So are we doing them all together?
Do we?
There's no action, is there?
No, it's only if, if the board.
It's a first reading, yeah.
Has an item they'd like to look at.
Yeah, and the board is allowed to have discussion on it and ask questions, right?
That's a first read.
And I have none, exactly.
Yes. Okay, so I guess we're okay with all, with all that. Sixteen point one, outstanding committee and other appointment reports.
So you'll see here, I just added the next meeting dates. I made it a little easier for us.
Oh, thanks.
To go through.
Have you met Ms. Baker? DOS reports.
DOS is meeting sometime very soon.
The thirty-first.
The thirty-first. Thank you.
I can't see with this, our glasses. Better Culture and Winery Foundation, trustee Baldini?
I'll report, next meeting, May sixth.
Uh, Legislative Affairs.
Yeah, um, thank you to Holly Dawson, our IPO, for the information. We actually didn't meet, um, due to kind of the, the in-between stuff that's happening, but she gave me some notes, uh, to just put into the record. February twenty-first was the last day for new legislation to be introduced. Analysis will take place over the next few months until the end of May, when bills must be passed out of the House of Origin, so we're kind of waiting for that to take place. As of today, CCLC has not taken any positions on any bills, nor provided any issue briefs, but we expect to learn more in the next week or so. We will schedule a meeting and review preliminary recommendations from CCLC and make our own recommendations to the board, hopefully at the next meeting.
Thank you. Audit and Finance, Ms. Baker?
Yes, we met last week, which already feels like a couple of months ago. Um, we, we had kind of a, um, reorganizing, kind of getting up-to-date meeting, talking about, um, the current status of the last year's audit, which was delayed because of a lot of staff turnover, and so we should be getting that. Um, remind me when? Soon?
So we, we have tentatively scheduled, uh, we should have it by the end of this month.
Okay.
We'll have it by the end of this month, I should say. And I believe we've scheduled a meeting for April second.
I knew, I knew it was first, first, either first week, that first week, or maybe it was, I couldn't find it in my calendar.
Right, so we had, they, the auditors had originally proposed April ninth, but that is during spring break, so we pushed it back to, uh, April second.
Perfect, okay. So, and the other thing that we, um, discussed was, um, the RFP that had gone out for Audit Services. The responses came back and were kind of all over the place, and, uh, the staff wasn't really super excited about any of them. So, um, the plan at this point is, although we, we're allowed to go for an additional year with our current auditors, um, but we just didn't, hadn't, didn't have that in the current contract. So the proposal that will be coming to the board probably next month, um, the Audit Committee will review it again, um, because they have to go out and get an actual proposal from the auditors, is to extend with our current auditors for another year, but we would have to go into a new contract for that year because our current contract does not allow for that. So, um, we're, we're, uh, everything, and then that gives us more, um, time to go back out with another RFP, hopefully, uh, late summer is the plan. So we will have more fun stuff next month. And our next meeting is now April second.
April second. Thank you. McPherson Distinguished Teaching Award, Ms. Goff?
Yes, you know, it's spring when we have McPherson, uh, Teaching Award and baseball. Um, so I was given some dates. A call for nomination opened on March tenth. Nominations are due on April third. The selection committee will review the week of April thirteenth. Announcement of the awardee will happen April twenty-third, and the recognition and presentation of the award will occur on May Day, May first.
Thank you. Napa Valley College Foundation, Mr. Iverson?
Um, we haven't had an actual meeting yet. We did have a board meet and greet, which was nice over at the Silverado Country, or the Silverado Cooking School. Um, and it was great to meet some of the board members. Not everybody was there, but there's one or two that I still need to meet. A lot of good things. I'm looking forward to bringing back, in particular, the Wine Education Program. There's a lot of conversation and movement on that, so I will keep you guys updated.
Thank you very much. We'd appreciate it. Uh, sixteen point two.
Excuse me, the Real Property Committee has no report.
Well, there you go.
I would add that, um, I will be sending out a request to the chair to set something up, um, in the next two, two to three weeks, if that works for the, for you.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you for that report. Uh, sixteen point two, future agenda items. Do we have anything that we would like to, uh, add to, or?
Can we get an, an update on the Upper Valley campus at, at some point in the, in the next few months? Or do you, do you anticipate that coming, Dr. Craft?
Yeah, I, I, actually, the timing is perfect. Um, the, the subcommittee, um, I want to get together to start reviewing some of that pieces. Bob and I are working on it, and, and we're working on different facets of it. Uh, this week got kind of a, you know, eclipsed, but, um, we, my goal is to bring that before the close of the school year for a, a draft tentative plan of what we've got going.
Thank you.
Trustee and Board Chair Reports. Trustee Dodd?
I didn't have an opportunity to, I snuck out a little earlier at, at the last meeting, but on our, uh, January, um, uh, the conference, the convention we had up in Sacramento, I enjoyed that tremendously. Didn't get an opportunity, but thoughts on, uh, with trustee Goff, we had some really good conversations about, um, you know, guided pathways program, early college program, which I'd love, you talk about, um, considering that idea of more, but I think we all need to learn a little bit more about that. I don't know if you talked about that last time, but. And then, let's see, uh, we went to the, uh, Puente, uh, open, open house for their, uh, new, uh, space, which looked great, looked great, and a lot of, uh, sharp young folks in there, uh, I think sixteen in the, in the cohort. Um, so, yeah, it was a pleasure, pleasure to be there.
Trustee Rios?
Um, I was also at the Puente Open, Open House, and I was, um, surprised to see that they, all of the Puente members were young ladies.
Women.
Uh, that there were no young men. Um, and so that wa, that was interesting. They all, um, it was great to hear from them about what they're planning, what they're hoping to do in the future. Um, so I, I think it looked like a great space for them to have, uh, for studying and getting some of the resources. I don't know, I, do we need some recruitment to get some men in there too, to, to take advantage of, uh, this wonderful program? Uh, the, the ladies are certainly doing it. Let's, let's get the men in there too.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Goff?
So, yeah, like, all of us, I was there and, and I had that moment that I think everybody has eventually, when I looked out and went, wow, they look so young. How old are these children? They're college students. Really, they look so young, so, um, that was, that was, uh, yeah, I haven't had that lately, so, um, but other than that, I'm just happy to be here. And, and as, uh, trustee Baker and I chatted a little bit, talking about how this whole coronavirus, at least we're all in it together, right? At least we're all kind of in the same boat, and there has to be, um, some consolation in that. Um, but there's also that, that knowledge that we'll, we'll see it through. We will survive it and, and get over the hump. It's just trying to figure out how to do it in the least, with the least amount of pain. So I wish everybody well. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Iverson?
Um, I just wanted to, again, kind of piggyback on what trustee Goff was saying just about the district's response to the.
I thought it was they were all young.
The current state of affairs in the community, and I also wanted to acknowledge and give a shout out to our PIO, Holly, for all of our good press releases and keeping everybody informed. So, good job on that, and I also wanted to thank my beautiful pregnant wife for sitting through this one.
Trustee Baldini?
I'd like to applaud, I was also in attendance at the Puente. Just applaud the staff for their strength and to carry on the program, the continuity over the years. And I was delighted to see another anniversary of a very important program to our college youth. I was also up in the Upper Valley campus with, uh, Madam President and Pablo, our student trustee, watching, um, Madam President devane shrimp, I think, or something like that.
Stirring the pot.
Stirring the pot, yes.
Thank you very much. Trustee Baker?
Um, just, uh, do want to also applaud just the college's response on COVID nineteen. Uh, I, you know, I, I work in the communications office at, at the school district, and, um, it's always, I mean, Holly's always two steps ahead of us, so, and we're okay with that. I was also able to, uh, uh, as Nancy mentioned in the report that she and Amber gave, um, that she has given, uh, copies of the, uh, plan to other organizations. I have done that as well, because, uh, I, I am a part of a lister with a number of different organizations, and, and people were asking, you know, does anybody have anything in writing? And I was like, well, I know somebody who does, and I have a copy, so I'll forward it to you. And the last thing I would say is just, um,
And the last thing I would say is just, as a librarian, check your resources. There's so much misinformation out there. I've seen, so I saw something yesterday that was supposedly from Stanford about, you know, drink warm water and you'll be fine. That's not true. So fact-check, check the CDC, check the health organizations. Don't forward it if you haven't verified it.
Thank you very much. I was also at the Puente Grand opening, and it's great to see that they have a place to go to. Thank you that, all that made it possible. And I did go to the Omocha celebrations. That was quite something. It was very, very lively. It was very good. Pablo was selling tickets and taking some quizzes and TV shows, quotes, you know, where does that belong? And so it was good. It was very lively. And yes, I was chopping vegetables to make lumpias, and they were awesome, if I may say so myself, and they paired lovely, very wonderfully, with Napa Valley College wines, and so. Yes, but the lumpias were bad. And so, yeah, that was about it. And so we are scheduled for our next meeting in April, was it?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third. So, thank you very much. We're adjourned, and we will see you on the twenty-third, if not before. And kudos to all of you that have organized so well and have a plan and set in place to deal with what will happen sooner or later, and how we conduct classes and how we support students, and, and thank you for your very hard work, and, yeah, good luck to all of us. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.